Great.
All right, let's call our regular board meetings to order. I'll join in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, clerk, please call a roll.
All right, trustee Moravka?
Here.
Trustee Sluse?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Bowden?
Here.
Trustee Sturba? Trustee Hudson?
Here.
Okay, public comments.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
So, when I come, I usually ask for stuff, but I never report back, so I'm trying to make it a point to report back. And previously, I had asked you guys for a special use permit for, to do the pub crawl bingo. Happy to report, everything went wonderful. Everybody behaved, we had over a hundred people. And we were able to raise $2,500 for Ashley Brown, which is a local Piattone girl who got into a bad accident. So, just wanted to say thank you for trusting me for that, and thank you to everybody who participated. Everybody behaved, and it went off really well. A second thing I asked for was a special use permit for the tree lighting on the corner of Second and North Street. I know I see a lot of faces that were there that night. We had easily over 300 people in attendance. I've definitely made some notes on things we'll do differently. We'll ask for a road closure next year. We did have people standing in the street, so it was a little hard to contain 300 people in that little lot. So, it was a great turnout, everybody had a wonderful time. It was literally like a Hallmark movie, and everything went very well. So, I just wanted to say thank you. I know I always come here to ask for stuff, and I'm like, I'm gonna make it a point to go there and say thank you, and at least report back and let you know that, just how things went. And then, just a shout out to Christmas in the Village Committee. I don't know if anybody here is on it, but that was an amazing day this weekend as well. So, it's a lot of fun to see the town come together for, you know, not only people in need, but for holidays and stuff too. And it was a great day for all the businesses, I think, on all three days, all three events that, that we did. So, that's it. I just wanted to say thank you and let you know that, you know, some good news for a change, not up here to ask for anything or crap about anything. Just wanted to say thank you, and, you know, y'all have a thankless job, and, you know, keep doing what you're doing. Thank you, I gotta go to bingo. Ugly sweater night bingo show. Thank you. It was nice meeting you.
Did you wanna introduce yourself?
Oh, sure.
Do you want me to introduce you?
Yeah, you introduce me.
Hi, everyone. This is Mark Corning. He is the new owner of the Vedant.
Nice to meet all of you.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
So, he also owns several papers a little further north. He could tell you all about all of those. And I, since he is the new owner, he's named me as the editor of both the Piattone and the Miantino additions to the Vedant.
Congratulations.
Thank you all for your hospitality. It's an honor to be here. I look forward to getting to know all of you. We couldn't ask for a better editor and local person. These are the sixth and seventh newspapers I own. The company I have stretches all the way from the Archer Avenue corridor in the city, through the Displanes Valley, through Oak Lawn, Orland Park, Tinley Park. And we had the opportunity, when the Russell family was ready to sell, to buy these papers, and it's an honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any trustee wants to take out of the consent agenda? If not, we've got the minutes from our last board meeting in there, and then the accounts payable and payroll. The payroll paid period ending 11/30/21 of $31,347.11, and from 12/6/21 of $17,316 for a total of $48,657.27. Accounts payable, we have a general fund, $109,870.9, from the MFT Fund, $2,223, capital improvement funds, $1,438.50, and the business development district, $423.90 for a total of $113,955.49. There are motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll motion it.
Okay.
Moved by trustee Muravka, second by trustee Jones.
All right, roll call vote. Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yeah.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
And trustee Bowden?
Yes.
All right, moving on to committee reports. AOC had a committee meeting last week.
Yes, we did, last Tuesday, I think. Anyway, we've done about four main agenda items. We had met with the folks from Terry's Ford, who kind of updating us on some of their expansion plans that they're gonna be working on for next year. And basically, they're gonna expand their parking so they can sell more trucks, so that would be good for the village. So, we're excited to hear that. We kinda, it started with a discussing, the next item was discussing the fee schedule that we charge developers. And turns out, we've got an old fee schedule that needs to be updated, so I think we're gonna kind of bring that up to date and be more consistent in the fees, and help out some of the other taxing districts there. Last, or third was, Amy's been working with Comcast on trying to get internet out to the new Public Works Building out on Ratchee Road, and at the same time, upgrading the internet speeds here in the, in the office. Since we've got our new computer system and stuff, we wanna kind of tie in the two locations and do that, so she's got a nice proposal from them. And we discussed using the village attorneys for some of our more difficult code violation projects that are become, seem to be coming more and more, happening more often, and becoming a little bit more difficult to solve. So, we're gonna kind of bring in some more, those in the skilled of art of negotiating those.
That wear eye patches.
What happened the last time we said. But anyway, so we're gonna, not for every single one, the simple ones, we're gonna leave where we're at, but we'll bring in the village attorney for some of the more complex ones. And that was pretty much all we talked about.
Moving on, downtown, we have a ad hoc committee had a meeting as well last week?
Yes, we actually had it on December 8th at 5:00 o'clock here at the Village Hall. We met to discuss the revitalization of the railroad street parking. We discussed our recommendations for just street lamps, street border, pavers, and possible plants and garbage can receptacles to be carried out throughout the whole downtown area. So, once we do move forward, we have kind of a coordinating look. And I know trustee Sluse had stated she was going to look into the best and cheaper priced brick or stone for the project and the color schemes that we would be able to select from.
There's no questions on either of those reports. Move on to administrator.
You have a paper copy in your packet, but I'll just touch on a few things. We did get news, the mayor and I, that the Nine April property on I-57, that has the spoil pond on it, is under contract. So, that's good news. That's really all we know at this point. But they're, they're working on closing on that in the spring, so we'll keep you posted if we, even when we get more information. Just a reminder about some code. Raffles in particular are allowed in the village. However, a raffle license must be permitted in accordance with our code under amusements, entertainments, and gatherings. The raffle is a form of lottery, as defined under the statute. The fees for a raffle license range from $15 to $50.
Any questions for the administrator? If not, move on to engineering. Troy have anything?
No, probably just the Wilmington Road sidewalk project and the Elbourne Storms Road project. We're planning on trying to get out the bid, you know, mid, like mid to late January. I'll work Amy, I'll work with Amy on getting a date for the bid opening. And if you go with those in February, you know, then you're all ready for the start of construction season.
Perfect, that's great news. We don't have a report from police chief for Public Works or Treasure. So, on to my comments. Just got a couple of things here. So, anyway, I want to thank the Christmas in the Village Committee for putting on a great event last Saturday. Committee was chaired by trustee Jones. Special thanks to committee member Tammy Cogger, who's been involved with the event for many years and did a lot of the background work. I wanted to thank all the other committee members, trustee Sturba, trustee Sluse, superintendent Steve Stein, and resident Jamie Scraven. Thanks to all the businesses that donated and participated. There will be a wrap-up meeting in January, set a date for 2022. And any residents interested in serving on that committee next year should contact the Village Hall. The police department's toy and food drive is continuing for a few more days. Kitech Chief for to drop off donations. Donations will benefit Helping Hands and the American Legion Children's Party. Update on the Second Street Saloon demo. As you know, there's some issue with the utility pole there. That's been shored up. We're still working with the demo company on, you know, getting started with that. There's still some questions about, you know, who has liability with that pole, and so... It's proceeding, it's just taking longer than we want, so... But Amy's been working on it, so we'll get it done. Some better news, we got news that, from the Morton Arboretum, that we're getting 50 free trees in the spring. They're gonna be delivered on Wednesday, May 11th, in the morning. I know it's a long ways away, but if any trustees are available that morning, we'd love to have help putting the trees in the ground. I mean, Public Works is gonna be there, obviously, but I think they're actually bringing some people with them. So, it'd be nice if, you know, we had a few volunteers from the, from the community help as well. They're, they're not huge trees, but, I mean, they're decent size, they're inch and a half trees, but, you know, just bring a shovel and help out, it'd be great. Like Troy says, a few of our capital projects we've been planning on are on track to be played out for construction. He mentioned Wilmington Road sidewalk and Auburn Street, and then, you know, we're hoping also that the railroad street parking lot will be in there as well, right?
Yeah, follow. They won't be ready that soon, but...
Yeah, so, perfect. All right, moving on. Old business, new business, recommendation to hire code officer. We've been without a code officer for a few months here, and Amy has decided on hiring Dennis Brennan. So, that his information is in the packet there, so I'd like to entertain a motion to make that hire.
Motion.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Sluse.
Okay, roll call vote. Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
And trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Okay, so in your packet is a list of our meeting dates for 2022. We just need approval of that schedule. One thing to note is we already put on there that we're gonna cancel the second meeting in December, which I think falls the day after Christmas. So, if we have some urgent business, we can always call a special meeting, so entertain a motion to approve that schedule.
Second.
Moved by trustee Hudson, second by trustee Muravka.
All right, roll call vote. Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
And trustee Bowden?
Yes.
And speaking of the second meeting in January, the recommendation that we cancel our December 27 regular village board meeting. A lot of the staff are out the week before that, so it makes it kind of tricky to put together agenda, and I don't think there's anything particularly urgent that has to be done there, so...
I'll motion it. Second.
Moved by trustee Muravka, second by trustee Sluse.
Okay, roll call vote. Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
And trustee Bowden?
Yes.
And next, also concerning that week, recommendation to close the administrative offices on December 23rd, so... The official date, because Christmas is on a Saturday, the Christmas holiday for everybody is the 24th, and there's also a floating holiday that the staff usually uses that same week, so we're saying that that's gonna be the December 23rd, so...
I'll motion it.
Second.
Moved by trustee Muravka, second by trustee Hudson.
Roll call vote. Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
And trustee Bowden?
Yes.
All right, this next item, E, authorize collection of impact fees for fire department in accordance with ordinance for all new developments starting January 2022. This was the item that trustee Bowden alluded to in his report. In the past, there's been some question on collecting these fees, and we've tried to do some research on what should be done, and so the recommendation is that we start collecting for the fire department for all new developments. Sound about right?
That's the way I learned about it, yes.
So, how do you collect? Is it through when they come in here to, like, put in for, like, a new building permit or whatever?
Yeah.
So, we collect the fees for the school?
We don't collect them, they go pay them at the individual locations.
They'll go to the fire department.
They'll go directly there, and then, we won't give them a permit until...
They do all that.
They do have that receipt, okay. All right, thank you. And this is an existing ordinance, it's just making, making a consistent collection process.
Okay, thank you.
I will motion it.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Muravka.
Okay, roll call vote. Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
And trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Item F is to authorize village administrators sign a three-year contract with Comcast for Main Street and Ratchee Roads to upgrade speed to the Village Hall and run a hard line to Ratchee Road Public Works Building. Want to comment on that?
Yes, we've been without a contract with Comcast since 2018, so we're capped at 75 megabits of data. And as trustee Bowden mentioned, we've, we've switched over to a VoIP phone system and upgraded our server, so we have the opportunity to increase up to 300 megabytes of service, but we would have to enter into that three-year contract. And so, as they were giving me the, the sales pitch, I mentioned our, we need a hard line out at, at the Ratchee Road, and that would, that, they couldn't do it before, wouldn't do it before, I mean, unless the village paid for it, which is about $40,000 of work to get that out. So, right now, Public Works operates on Wi-Fi only. They, they are not connected to our server, so they can't access any information that we have here on our server and vice versa. They can't put anything on the server that, that we could access here. It's just a little bit more unreliable service, 'cause it's Wi-Fi out there, and it'd be really nice to get a hard line. However, what Comcast is saying is they would like us to enter into an agreement to provide, have service provided out there, once they, we have to guarantee that we'll use their line that they're gonna build for us, which is fine. I have to sign these papers first, and then they'll tell me if they'll run that line. But they did assure me that if they, if the land department comes back and says, no, we, we can't make that investment, then we do not have to adhere to the contract, it will be null and void, we can, we can eliminate it, and then we can just upgrade here if we want to. So, I would like to upgrade here no matter what. I would only want to upgrade out there if they'll run the line for us.
For free, if we sign?
Correct, for free.
Okay.
And that would double what we pay monthly. So, so it would increase here, if we upgrade our service, we pay 200 a month, it would increase to 245 a month. So, that's a no-brainer right there. But then, if we add the Ratchee Road, then that would cost us another 245 a month for the service out there. And, but that would not kick in until they actually could use the service. So, I don't have to start paying now and while they're waiting to run the line or whatever. So, I thought it was worth a try to see if we can get that hard line built.
Is there any recapture we could get from other people tapping into that line?
We wouldn't get the recapture. They would get it, if, but that maybe, I think they look at that as, as if they would do it for free. So, hopefully, there'd be a few, there's, there's not many, you know, out there, but maybe the few that are. Nycor, they ran the line for us for free, and they had all those businesses and the residents tap on. So, helps their cost.
And our cost.
Yes, definitely, definitely. That was six, about $16,000 that Nycor ran the line for us and put, but at their cost, not ours.
Any other questions? You maintain a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Sluse.
Okay, roll call vote. Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
And trustee Jones?
Yes.
IMG is recommendation by the downtown committee to approve parking plan for railroad street parking lot. This was brought up at the last meeting, but we, they just had their meeting right before that village board meeting, so there was no action item on the agenda. So, I just wanna put this on here so that, you know, we've got it approved by the full board. So, there was, the engineers had presented one option, and then we asked them to draw up kind of a second option where the parking was gonna be facing, cars would be facing, you know, out from the center instead of in from the center. And so, those two options were looked at, and I think the downtown committee recommended that we stay with the original option, so... Do you have anything to add to that, Shelly?
Just in adding another walkway at the north side and curb, curb lines, right? Is that what we talked about?
Along the entrance.
Yes, and swales. The water swale.
The bio swales.
Bio swales. And that was one of the questions we actually had. Is that gonna be rock, or will that be plants?
We can kind of make it however you want. It might not be technically a bio swale. Some of the soil that needs to go into those is really expensive and special, and it may not be needed in this size parking lot. But it'll be some sort of landscape median, and we could do it. You know, I, there's examples of them down with mulch, rock. Grass might not be good if water's gonna be sitting, is sitting there a lot, but we can, you know, let me know what you guys want, and we'll try to figure out the best way to do it.
So, this is kind of off the topic, but there was some discussion on, you know, drainage. You know, we talked about why we're having this bio swale, and that, you know, the existing, the existing property right now, when it does rain, I mean, there's quite a bit of water there, but it seems like it drains away right away. And I was asking Troy if, you know, if what we're gonna be doing here will improve that situation. You said you guys are kind of looking at that, and they'll have an answer for us.
Yeah, I, I, we, I don't have the grading plan drawn up by our drafting department yet, but the designer who's working on this told me that he's making sure the curb line grades are gonna get the water to one of the catch basins, where now, maybe it's so flat, it's probably, you know, not all getting into the drainage structure, so it should be a better situation. It still might not be perfect, just 'cause of how flat it is out there, and storms are just small, but we're gonna make it better.
That, that structure is large enough to handle the water getting there quicker?
The structure that's already out there?
Yeah.
Well, we might be putting a new one in. The storm sewer underground, that's kind of the question, if, 'cause it's not a big storm sewer underground, so... But it's, you know, it's there now, so I'm sure it's gonna take it away, you know. It's not gonna make it worse. We're gonna put a new structure, and we're gonna make it, you know, degrade it better, so...
The road will be smooth, so it won't have the pockets to hold the water.
Right, it won't hold, yeah, the bird baths the water, you know.
How wide is the sidewalk behind the buildings?
Typically, the sidewalk right against the curb is gonna be six feet, but there's a couple spots where it'll be either a little wider or narrower due to the buildings.
And how wide is the street gonna be?
22 feet, but there'll be the curb, curb and gutter, which is a foot and a half wide approximately, too. On the one side, on the west side, there'll be the curb and gutter also, which kind of...
But the actual road surface?
The actual road surface will be 22 feet. That's what we have shown right now.
And it's still gonna be a two-way?
So, it'll be 11-foot lanes?
Yep.
What is it now? Do you have any idea?
Well, it's, the parking is not really defined, you know, 'cause it's, kind of goes into the parking, but it's, yeah, it's in that same vicinity with not much different ones.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation by the downtown committee to go with the first option.
Motion. Second.
Moved by trustee Hudson, second by trustee Jones.
Okay, roll call vote. Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
And trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Jim? Is it okay for trustee Jones to vote on this because of the district?
On the ordinance, levying taxes?
No, no, on the downtown, the parking, well, we just voted that.
What was the motion?
Well, he's got property there, but I think, he doesn't need to vote. So, the easiest way to go is just refuse himself. You still have sufficient number of votes.
So, can we, somebody else second the motion then?
I'll second it.
Moved by trustee Hudson, second by trustee Muravka. Why don't you go ahead and do a roll call again?
All right, we'll do a roll call again. Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
And say trustee Jones. Yes, trustee Jones, too.
And trustee Jones?
I'll recuse myself. No vote.
Abstain, recuse.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Moving on to ordinances. This will be ordinance 2129. Ordinance for levying and assessing of the 2021 taxes for Village of Piattone, Willcom, Illinois. So, this is our annual ordinance of levy of the property taxes. We do this every year at this time. It's gotta be in by, you know, second week of December. We are asking for a 4.9% increase, I believe. That doesn't mean that people's property taxes will go up that amount. Actually, you'll probably, you might even see a little decrease. The 4.9 increase is to capture all the new improved property that's been built over the last year. So, if we don't ask for an increase, we end up getting less money. Or not getting the money that's due us from those new properties. So, that's what this is all about. Any questions?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Sluse.
Okay, roll call vote. Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
And trustee Jones?
Yes.
All righty. Next ordinance is 2130, an ordinance declaring surplus property. So, the village is obtaining a couple of new vehicles, making a couple of the vehicles we have be surplus. So, there's a dump truck and a police cruiser, and then also some older Christmas decorations. So there's a dump truck and a police cruiser and then also some older Christmas decorations that the Public Works has that we want to try to get all those items sold, put some money back in the treasury, so. Entertain a motion to do that.
Motion. Second.
Moved by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Sluse.
Roll call vote, trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
And trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Uh, next is, this will be ordinance twenty-one thirty-one, it's ordinance directing sale of vacant village property. Uh, this is a small lot that's on the corner of Washington and it says Crawford, is that correct?
Lincoln.
Oh, it's Lincoln. Yeah, so it should be Lincoln, so that needs to be corrected in there, in the ordinance, okay? Where it says Washington in, in the actual ordinance itself, make sure it says Washington and Lincoln, okay? Commonly known as three oh four Washington Street. Uh, this is a little piece of property that the village obtained probably ten years or so or more ago when the Bennett property was given to the village. And this was a little piece for, you know, I don't know, I think they were gonna use for an office building at one time. So anyway, we wanted to declare that, we want to be able to sell that property, so this kind of starts that process.
Is that the property that's recognized and all is old place? I'll motion that.
Well, I have a couple of questions. What's the penalty if that's not built on within twelve months?
Hmm, that's a good question. I think it's a condition of the, of the, of them buying it, so. Should we put a penalty?
Do you want to know, effectively, probably not much, I tell you the truth. That kind of a condition, which we, on the bid sheet, that, where the people that make the bid, they have to, you know, commit to do that, so it's a contract obligation. But if you don't fulfill a contract obligation, you know, the only remedy, of course, is to sue for breach contract. And obviously, I won't just say it, that would be pretty ineffective. You know, filing a lawsuit against the person who bought it to require them to do it. And furthermore, what our damage would be, we'd be highly skeptical. So, you know, the enforceability is there, it will be a contract obligation. But if it comes to it, they don't, they don't do it, I'm going to be sitting here telling you your remedies are. You know, we draft a lawsuit and file it to enforce their contract obligation. You know, you're probably gonna wonder about that. But it gives us leverage there and we hope that the person who bids and signs that contract, unless, you know, something very untoward happens, does what they say they're going to do. And you know how that is with, with contracts, most of it is, a good part of it is the person who signs the contract. Are they going to live up to their obligation? But we did put that in the, specifically in the bid, bid sheet to sign that they are gonna have that contract obligation. That's about all I can say on that.
Another question I had here, it says, no outdoor storage allowed. Does that mean you can't take a container and plop it down on the lot and use it for storage or trash storage or whatever?
That's a good question, too, what they're primarily getting at would be, you know, parking trucks, machinery and that, that sort of thing. I doubt that we would have a problem with them putting up some kind of a shed or something that would store something indoors.
According to code.
But, yeah, we'll use our code for that.
No building material stacked up?
No, no, that, no, that's what they're looking at, we don't want a bunch of pipes or.
And no construction machinery?
Right.
Right, correct.
Which is in our code already.
Right.
Correct, I mean, it would be a code violation, we could, we should enforce if that happens.
But kitty corner for that property, we have a person, we have a person that is a flagrant.
Yes.
Disregard, so how do we pick and choose that one?
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, because some things exist that shouldn't, I think the, the purpose of this is just saying, it's not, you can't do what's surrounding you at the moment. We have an easier opportunity to set the standards, not saying that we shouldn't go after violators, we definitely should.
And also to give notice to the bidder, too, to make it very clear, you know, as to what they're signing and they're, they're saying, you know, that they're going to agree to. And whatever their proposed use is, and I, I think there's at least one person that we know that's interested, as I understand it.
And currently, it's, it's zoned industrial.
Yes.
It's, so the, the regulations for uses, you know, are in the I-one. What we're saying is we're trying to kind of make it look a little bit nicer than that.
Yeah, B-two.
B-two, is it industrial?
No, no.
You gonna change the zoning on it?
Well, we, what we're saying is, is that as a condition of the purchase, they can only have, only use it for B-two uses.
So not industrial?
Correct.
And could, could that zoning be changed?
Yes, we could chan, the zoning can be changed too, but then we, you know, we do have to go through the zoning process. But yes, it, it could be. And because of the closeness of the, there's a couple residential properties that are close by, I raised that with Amy, we talked about it.
Yeah.
I said, you know, we've got to be reasonably careful here or we're gonna miff off some residents, basically. Even though right now, as it stands, it's industrial, you know, which we would need to change anyway. But this purchaser is going to be limited to B-two uses.
So it probably would be a good idea to rezone it.
Yeah, it would be.
Right?
Yes, it would be.
Because we don't want him buying it and then selling it to somebody else who says, oh, it's industrial.
Right.
Right? So we probably should get started in that process.
That's easy enough.
Yeah.
Well, we have to do the notices.
Right. So, just to give the board, so tell us the process, so we, tonight we say, okay, we want to sell this, then what happens?
Okay, the process for the sale of property, and I'll also note, mayor, you do have to vote on this one too.
Okay.
Because the, the process goes this way, after we adopt the ordinance, we publish for bids for three successive weeks. And we have to put the dates in there, Amy's gonna take care of that. And then after the bids come in, and they have to be submitted on the bid sheet that we have prepared already, which is what's gonna create the contract. They submit the bid sheet signed with their bid. The minimum bid is ten thousand, although there would be room for you to technically, under the state statute, you could potentially alter that, you wouldn't have to. You do have the right to reject all bids too, of course.
Even if they meet the minimum?
Yes, yeah, we put it in that you, I mean, I wouldn't suggest that you do that unless you have a good reason. But if you have a good reason, yes. Then the bids have to be opened at a public, regular board meeting. Okay, and so you open the bids, read them, take action as appropriate at that time, which would normally be, you know, assuming nothing unusual, the high, you know, you would accept that idea, assuming that. Now, realize we've set this up in a way that the cost is going to be nothing to us, but at the same time, in a typical real estate sale, the seller has to prepare, has to order title commitment, has to give a survey, all those things are left out. We're selling it as-is, okay, pursuant to a quitclaim deed from the village, with the closing to be right here, the exchange of the check for the quitclaim deed, leaving it up to the purchaser then to accept the transaction on that basis or not. Now, I'm assuming that, you know, for that purchase price, we'll, we'll get some bids, but.
Are there any pitfalls to the purchaser by not having that done prior to?
Well, not, I mean, theoretically, any purchaser of property wants a title policy. You know, to say that they have good title. He's gonna have to get his own because we're not providing it for him, which means we're not paying our share of the title charges and all of that. As far as worrying about whether we really have title to the property, no, that shouldn't be a problem. We clearly do, so the quitclaim deed is going to be good. And obviously, once that's recorded, the title can, you know, somebody can obtain their own title insurance if they want it. But, you know, you know what the pitfall is, if you were buying it from somebody else, you might wonder a little bit more. They're buying it from the village, you know, so probably be less of a, less of a concern that we actually have, have title. But we do, and we can.
Does the village currently maintain that spot, cut the grass?
I'm sorry?
We do, yes, we maintain it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we got the Harris Rebar, I believe, it was Harris Rebar. When we went after them on their building, okay, because they, they weren't taking care of it and it was kind of a pain in the rear. And we had to fight with them a little bit in the, in the railroad, but we ultimately, for their tax savings by giving it to the village, first of all, they wouldn't have to, you know, be bothered with it anymore. And two, they would get a tax deduction for the fair market value of the property. But at that time, we asked them for that lot too, to get it right along with the, with the thing. And we did, we did obtain it and essentially at no cost of, you know, our legal work to do it. But no, no money.
Okay.
I think it worked out pretty well.
Yeah, so.
So all we're doing is just agreeing to, that we will sell it?
Yeah, you're putting out the process and when the bids come in, they, they obtain the bid sheets, that's right in the notice from the clerk. You can either get them in person or you can, somebody can call and get it sent to them. And they have to execute the bid sheet, you know, fill it all in and sign it, of course. And then it's gotta be sealed in a sealed envelope, given back to the village. And whatever we get by the, that next board meeting night, we'll be in here and the clerk will open them up and read them. And then the board will decide.
Now, can we, does that have to be done in open session when we decide?
Yes, that's all open, open session, yes, it's all, all open.
All right, there's no further questions, trustee Moravka had motion, is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Hudson.
All right, did you say that you were supposed to vote too?
No, mayor votes, everybody votes, it requires a vote of six.
Okay.
And the mayor votes too, okay.
Yes.
Trust, roll call vote, trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. All right, next is a resolution allocating the twenty-twenty-one tax levy to individual, individual funds of village property tax extension limitation law as amended. So a couple ordinances ago, we actually approved the levy and now this is a resolution allocating those funds from the levy into individual funds in the village. Any questions? Not entertain a motion to, this would be resolution twenty-one dash R fourteen.
Motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Sluse, second by trustee Hudson.
All right, roll call vote, trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
And trustee Moravka?
Yes.
All right, so next, we, I need a motion to go into executive session. We are actually only going to discuss items two and three, which is the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body being considered including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. And then also, we're gonna have another session on pending imminent or probable litigation. So I need to entertain a motion to go into executive session for those two persons.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jones, was it? Second by trustee Moravka.
All right, roll call vote, trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
And trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Okay.